Ready? Roger, you ready? Meeting called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman McLean.
Here.
Councilman McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harrow.
Here.
Councilman Dan.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Here.
Councilwoman Manus.
Here.
You gonna ask me? I'm here, thank you very much. Do I hear a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The prayer this afternoon be given by Mr. McBride. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to serve the city and to serve you. I pray your blessings on this meeting. I pray for wisdom as we make decisions and discuss the business. I pray for the employees, for their safety, and thank you for them and pray for their families. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Jim. Do you hear a motion for the review and the approval of minutes of the previous meeting dated November 28th, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. At this time, we'll recognize any visitors or citizens with any grievances or praises. We'd like the praises first. Communications from the mayor have several things. They have several appointments. But first, I'd like to ask Matt Howell and his family if they'd meet me at the podium.
I'd like to read a, I won't say a following statement, but this little recognition for not only Sergeant Howell, but also for his K-9 Bronco. Sergeant Matthew Howell and K-9 Bronco began their tour of duty together at the Campbell County Sheriff's Department in 2011. Sergeant Howell has served his community for approximately 20 years, and K-9 Bronco served his 11th year in 2022. K-9 Bronco was 18 months old in 2010 when he became part of Sergeant Howell's family. He not only worked daily with Sergeant Howell, but grew up with his children. With the passing of K-9 Bronco in October 2022, we would like to mention a few of the many accomplishments this duo has accomplished over the course of their career together. K-9 Bronco logged over 3,500 hours of training and deployments. Bronco has had approximately 1,000 deployments in the East Tennessee area, seized over 200,000 drugs, cash, assets, and vehicles for local, state, and federal law enforcement agencies. The team aided in the apprehension of more than 100 criminals for local, state, and federal agencies and organizations. Officer Howell and K-9 Bronco was the most requested K-9 team in East Tennessee. The duo is certified in international drug detection, and they are one of only 30 teams that are able to recognize the difference between marijuana and hemp in the United States. And I know, Matt, a lot of people, we've all had pets and stuff, but this is a lot more than a pet. This is somebody you counted on, and he counted on you. And the attachment and the relationship you all had is really hard to explain if you're not in that situation. But I certainly appreciate your service and also Bronco's service. Thank you. Thank you. Remembrance of K-9 is a very nice, I want to say a plaque, but it's something that staff did, and it's very nice. So come out here now.
Have a picture. Y'all come around here, we have a picture here. Somebody go my side.
Great, over 11. Amazing, they made the sin, you know, how they can differentiate. You know what wonder with this fentanyl? Just give it a few more seconds here.
Under board and community appointments, first of all, we need to elect a new Vice Mayor. And, you know, we've been very well served with Vice Mayors in the past. I know Rob's been, and Jim's been, and Zach was. And I thought the next step, somebody, he didn't have to earn it because he's been on, I guess I'd say he's been on every committee anyway. This is the last one.
Yeah, this is the old committee.
But I'd be proud to appoint, with y'all's approval, Larry Gann for a four-year term. And that'd be ending November 30th, 2026, as our Vice Mayor. I'm sorry, what is it? Two years, a two-year? My city manager told me wrong. It's a two-year term. Yeah, he's on medication. Vaughn, I'm sorry, you might have to turn your head. But term ending November 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Your check doesn't double, by the way.
Taxes may get good.
Yeah, yeah. Under CUB, Councilman Farah was in that position. And I would like to appoint for your term for appoint Mr. McBride, Jim McBride, to the term of, for to be our representative for Clinton Utilities Board, term ending November 30th, 2026. If he's here, so.
I hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Also, on the City School Board, Mr. Queener, being on City Council, had to forfeit his, rest of his term on school board. We asked for any nominations, and we received one from KK Webster. And so she's the only appointee, and her term will be ending November 30th, 2024. Hear a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes.
Under Clinton Regional Planning Commission Report is me. As mayor, I'm required to be on Planning Commission. My term will end November 30th, 2026. Motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Few more here. Clinton Port Authority, David was on Port Authority, and it states based on their bylaws, the Port Authority bylaws, that he is not able, or any councilman is not able to serve on that board. So he had to come off that board also. I would like to appoint in his place Steve Queener for his term ending February 2025. Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Motion in a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. On Clinton Housing Authority, Joe Suggs, appointment ended December 31st, 2022. I'd like to reappoint her to that same position for another five-year term, ending December 31st, 2027. Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I do have one on Community Action Commission, but I haven't spoke with them yet, so I want to back that up to January. Clinton Recreational Recreation Advisory Board, Ed Rosenbaum. His term ended, and I'd like to reappoint Ed, or Eddie, term ending December 31st, 2024. Motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Also, Gary Terry's term ended. Certainly appreciate him participating in the Recreation Advisory Board. I'd like to fill that position with Archie Brummett, term ending December 31st, 2024. Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And also, ET had to come off, and we had to put another councilman on there. And I'd like to appoint David Queener to that position, term ending December 31st, 2023. Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That should have been 2024, shouldn't it, Bill? So do I need to go ahead and amend that? Can I make, do you hear a motion to amend? What's a two-year?
I changed my mind.
Make a...
No, pass.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
You'll do it for one, but not two.
You want to do six miles?
I just got to thinking.
Probation.
Him and Archie together. It didn't dawn on me at first.
How we need to, just to amend that? We had a motion to amend the previous motion to extend David Queener's term from December 31st, 2023 to December 31st, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Clinton Citizens Advisory Committee, I guess, is still one of those we haven't kind of shelved yet. But I'd like to reappoint Barry Hutchins and Marilyn Hayden to a three-year term, term ending December 31st, 2024. Motion to approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Mayor, what's the update on those, on boards that maybe we don't need anymore? We want to kind of weed some of those out?
Yeah, we've gotten some here. The Community Relations Committee, the Elder Citizens Advisory Board, Retail Development Advisory Board. I think the first two were called dissolved. So Bill, I guess we can just take these off the list, can't we? Or Gina, or whoever. Okay, okay. So I think we still have, you know, like the questions, is that Clinton Citizens Advisory Committee, is that something we just can't take out? Is that part of a grant or something that kind of restricts us? Or we just haven't taken the action on it?
I haven't found the research to give you an answer on that one, Jim.
Okay, all right. And also, the... Put one more. Don't get ahead of me. The Tree Advisory Board, there's three positions that have expired. I'm Gwen Payne, Bob Jameson, and Mary Hatmaker. Like to extend those four-year terms to November 30th, 2026. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That's all I have. I do want to welcome our new councilman and councilwoman, Wendy Manus. Manus.
You can say it however you want.
No, it's potato potato.
Well, I say Manus. My husband says Manus, so it's like, there's no wrong.
Okay, that's a lot of pressure, okay. Makes me feel better. And of course, lifelong citizen, David Queener. Glad to have you on here, too.
Thanks, sir.
Have to, Jim, you're going to work on your attire there. A little formal.
I appreciate it. He's been trying. He's threatening me with a knife.
Oh, there you go. It's on record. But I appreciate it.
Cut it out.
Appreciate both of y'all being on the board, looking forward to working with you all, for sure. ET, he's here today. Always good to see you. Don't be a stranger, and thank you again for all you've done.
He's done a lot.
He has. Community reports, City School Board report. Ms. Johnson, you have anything? Merry Christmas.
No Scott, Merry Christmas.
Clinton Regional Planning Commission Report, Councilman Gann, or Vice Mayor Gann?
Thank you. The BZA really didn't have any business, but the only business we had was the Planning Commission, applicant Jeremy Webb requesting site plan review and approval for property located on Highway Drive. And that's subject to some approval of fire hydrant, dumpster location, and stormwater study. As soon as he clears those with the City of Clinton, that was moved for approval. And that's all we have.
Any questions for Vice Mayor?
Thanks, Larry. Anything under other reports or anything?
Well, I might as well go ahead and do Green Back to Do while I'm thinking about it. There is a, going to be a six-weeks program demonstration on voting in America, beginning in March. And it is an outstanding program. I would encourage everybody, you've got six weeks to go up there and participate in that, so certainly put that on your calendar. Also, Adam Velk is planning a much broader Martin Luther King Birthday celebration. I think he's going to have a full breakfast for those of you who want it. And he's contacted a number of preachers to speak, so I don't know how long it'll be. But...
What are you saying?
I'll leave it at that. But I certainly encourage you to participate in the Martin Luther King Breakfast. It's been a staple of Clinton City for a number of years, and it's always a pleasure to be there and talk to those people. Also, I might mention, I mentioned it last week, last month, we did get a grant, and there, I think it was a $70,000 grant for improving of the kitchen and some of the flooring in the gymnasium. So I mean, we've, and it was non-match. It was a full grant, so.
Fantastic.
Things are going well at Green Back to Do.
Any other questions for Larry? Under ordinances, resolutions, we have a couple of resolutions. And Roger, or Chris, you may want to speak on these. Resolution number 830. Would you like to speak on that? Chris?
830 is the grant from Public Entity Partners that we get each year. Can't remember, we've got two of them on here, and I'm not looking at them, 829 and 830. So 830 is, excuse me, 830 and 831. 830 is the property conservation matching grant. It's, I think what we're going to do with that this year is put Knox boxes on several buildings in the city. And if you don't know what a Knox box is, I guess that's, that allows fire personnel to come into a building with, I don't know if it's a key, fire could probably speak better to that. But, so entry into the building is not a concern if you have a fire and somebody's not there to let you in, or you don't have to break in if you're a fire department. So that grant was 2825. We have to match that, so we're going to spend about $5,600 to put those on buildings. We get 12 of those devices, so 12 buildings. I assume 12 buildings, and maybe there might be some that are different location on one building. The, do we speak on 831?
I'll tell you what, before we go any further on that, I kind of jumped ahead. Roger, you can go over your general government report, please.
Okay.
I'd already checked it and moved on.
Mine's short, so it'll take long. Projects, Glen Alpine Drive and a relocated portion of Sinking Springs Road located on North Charles Seavers Boulevard, adjacent to Franco Diggs Drive and across from Do Run Boulevard have been completed, and the developer has requested both streets be accepted as public streets. The streets were constructed to City of Clinton specifications, and the construction was inspected and approved by the Public, excuse me, Public Works Department. I would therefore recommend the acceptance of Glen Alpine Drive and the relocated portion of Sinking Springs Road as a public street.
Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? And they were paving that this week, right? Is that...
No, it's on the other side.
Okay, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Finally, that's all. It's for Chris.
All right, thank you, Mr. City Manager. So at the end of November, that marks five out of the 12 months so far this fiscal year that have been, that's been completed, or 41.7% of the year is done. You'll notice the intergovernmental revenues do not reflect the sales tax yet because it's early in December. I don't have those numbers yet for November, so don't be alarmed there. We are starting to see our property tax money coming in as December is like the first big month that we have for property tax revenue. Again, expenditures, departments are doing a great job of keeping their budgets under control, and no concerns there.
Any questions for Chris? Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
That's all you had. Roger?
Yeah, just for information purposes, I spoke to each one of y'all individually back a couple of months ago, and I've spoke to the new councilman about it. We have hired a special counsel to assist us with some municipal laws as things come up, and also employment law. Nathan Rao is the person we selected. Nathan is actually the city attorney for the city of Pigeon Forge. But before that, he worked with Watson, Roach, and Batson, which is a law firm that usually represents us if we have anything through PE Partners. So he'll be on board.
Roger, I was looking at the list of projects that we've got, and we've discussed one, and I think at some point, we probably need to take another step or two, and that's the bowling alley in the community center.
We've had architects come out and look at the whole building. Actually got them looking at about three or four different projects at a time, so we just got a lot going on. But we have toured them through the building for not only the bowling alley. It's been almost 24, almost 25 years since we did any major renovation to that building. So it desperately, there's some other areas, too. Roofs, some heating and air units, the bowling alley. We did some work in the swimming pool last summer, I guess. But there's still some other areas, so we're trying to put a list together of that facility, along with the old National Guard Armory building, the swimming pool. So we've got them working on about three different projects.
So when you talk about bowling alley, you're talking about the equipment? I mean, not just, not just the building, but the equipment?
Yeah, and that's the original equipment, so that equipment dates back to 77, 78. So it's, and that's part of the problem, we're having trouble finding parts even.
So when will you think you'll be prepared to come with, I mean, how long does it take for them to come back with something? I mean, you think in next three months, 60, 90 days?
Possibly. We got them working hard on the swimming pool right now.
Oh, okay.
Because we want to try to get, we can get that to bid sometime by spring.
Okay.
And of course, we got the grant for the National Guard Armory, which is $500,000. And that's, that's going to be a whole lot of work for us. That's going to be enough to replace the roof, some of the windows, doors, and air conditioning units, kind of get it structurally good. And then the community center will probably be the third on that list.
When we do the armory, we're going to do ADA also.
Yes, in the two main bathrooms.
Roger, on the pool, we obviously want to open it this summer. When's the deadline that we need to have our ducks in a row for that to happen?
You know, the plan we met, it's been a month ago now. We were hoping to maybe be ready to go to bid sometime in January. You know, I just can't guarantee with the way construction is, the supply chain. I, you know, I don't know, when can we get started, or when can we finish? I'm not sure. It's just like the two traffic signals that we approved last February for Do Run Boulevard at Charles Seavers and Hillvale going into the Walmart. The cabinets on those have been backordered about 14 months. They put some of the arms up two weeks ago, but we're still, and they're telling us probably March or April before we get those in.
And Tanner Lane will be pretty soon after that, or we're just waiting on, is it already in the process?
There was a little bit of survey issue on Tanner Lane where we can locate the poles and right away. And I don't know if they did that yet or not.
Survey work's been done. It's not been stacked down on the ground yet. That equipment, it's the same poles are here, but the cabinets are in March.
So we're trying to get everything done, but the cabinets, so when the cabinets come in, we're ready to install them.
And will we do, go ahead and do the pool the same way in January or February? Put it out for bid?
I hope so.
That way, if it's going to take 14 months, the quicker we get it, the 14 months, the quicker the clock starts, the quicker it ends. Okay.
And then I had one other thing. I don't know about any of the other council members, but I've had more comments recently about the Christmas lights. And I know at one time, we were, some of y'all laughing, at one time, we were gradually replacing with LEDs and everything. And I think we're probably suffering a little bit from comparison to other cities. And I didn't know what the plan or program, are we up to date? Are we going to change it, or what do we?
I think the plan is basically the frames of the Christmas decorations, snowflakes are snowflake. We went, and I'll get these two terms mixed up. We went four or five years ago, changed from the LED to the LED bulb, but we went with the cool white, JB, which is the more of a...
Darker.
It has more of that bluer tint to it almost. Where I noticed, like Oak Ridge has the warm white. They actually have, I think, almost identically the same snowflake, but they have the different bulb. So our plan is to, next year, and me and Chris have talked about it for budget reasons, is to put enough money in the budget to relamp and redo all the decorations. And I think that'll make a big difference.
Yeah, it will. I've had more comments on that than about anything else.
And even relamping them, we did it, I want to think it's 16, 16 or 17 when we did it. It cost about $7,500 then, just for the bulb, so probably be $10,000 now. Those decorations are very expensive. They're anywhere from $550 to $750. And we have over $100, JB?
We put up $132 of them.
$132. So we'd like to try the relamping first of them, of it.
I would agree.
So, I mean, we feel pretty good to have that in place by next year?
Yes.
It's $10,000, and we can, we can afford that.
Just a lot of hard work, screwing bulbs in and out.
You know, I don't mean to be smart when I say this, but guys, when we start talking about Christmas light bulbs and speeders, season's in pretty good shape. In pretty good shape. But we've all heard that, and we're addressing it.
I have heard a lot of compliments about the lights on the poles across the bridge, though.
Yeah.
And we've had some issues with them, that they still haven't turned Blade Lock, it's not turned it over yet. Some of the ground fault breakers are kicking, so that's still on them to repair, not us or CUB.
You talking about on the bridge, or past?
Yeah, we're talking about the bridge. I think JB told me we had two out right now that blew over the weekend.
Oh, really?
They're going to fix the huge hump down underneath the bridge?
Yes. If you turn off Riverside, they're at Lakefront Park, and you go down under the hill, there's a manhole, and they got this manhole about six inches too high. So it's a pretty good hump there. Our request was that they actually take that part of asphalt out. I think there's like a 16 or 18-inch rim around it, just put a smaller rim and repave it. Well, somehow it got confused, and Blade Lock came in and actually took out a huge chunk of the curb and gutter and sidewalk that had just been put in. Their plan was they were just going to raise everything up. Well, we, really, it might work, but that's really not what we want. So we've requested through TDOT that they don't do it that way. And I don't think Mr. Murphy's heard anything back yet. But yes, it will.
It needs to be addressed. Thank you, Roger. Any other questions?
The last thing that we talked, I think I talked about that turn lane, like stacking up two turns to go to the bridge. I saw an email that Mr. Murphy gave. Basically, the state gave us the approval to do it, right? But no money.
Yeah, after the last meeting, we turned in a second request for that. Their engineers reviewed it, said it looked good, thought it'd work. And that was it. Now, they did come back. Lynn talked to them about next time they asphalt the Boulevard, could they do it then? And they said, yes, but that's 2028. So I think, I don't know, I know we've talked about doing some other marking at Clinton Main. Once they get done, it may be something we can look at then.
Would you put it in there and please get a price?
Yeah, have we made any decisions on the speed bumps on Eagle Bend? Councilman Gann said about Christmas lights, that's the biggest thing I've heard about, speed bumps on Eagle Bend. We're going to leave them, remove them?
Right now, I think plans are to leave them. We haven't really done a survey, hadn't had a chance yet of the neighborhood to see if they want them or not. Something probably get Mr. Riggs to work on.
We have to bill go door to door. Talk to everybody.
With a chocolate chip cookie.
I've got a few addresses I want to make sure you go by.
You might need some help.
I'm staying in the car.
Archie, Archie, go with him.
You good?
Any other, we got to keep moving. Any other questions for Roger? Thank you, Roger.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you. So we're back to Resolution Number 830, do you hear a motion for approval? For, yeah, motion for approval?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion or questions to Chris about this? Roll call, please.
Councilman Queener?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Harrow?
Yes.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes, Resolution Number 830 passes on first and final reading. Chris, do you mind talking a little bit about the Resolution 831?
Yes, so again, this is another grant that we received from Public Entity Partners, our insurer. And this is for driver safety. I don't know what we typically do with the driver safety grant. Maybe Ms. Sylvester can speak to that a little bit more.
Yeah, so for the driver safety grant, that is for annual MVR checks for all employees, and then we get reimbursed 100% for that. And then we are reimbursed 50% for, we're using it this year for our GPS systems on the police cars and maintenance system, so it'll actually pay for that premium. And then we also use it, we're getting two stop signs for driver training, for the evac training, and then we're also getting more cones and barrels this year.
Great. Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Queener?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Harrow?
Yes.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
And Mayor Burton.
Yes, Resolution Number 831 passes on first and final reading. Is there any old business for us?